One road that guy came out, quit. Came running out of his house there with just his socks on and gave him a coke. He stops and he gets out. Are you counting? I just want to tell you, these roads look so good.
Kevin's like, okay.
Well, we'll get the meeting going here at seven o'clock. For the Gackel City Council, Monday, November first, twenty twenty-one. Start time is seven P M. Did everyone have a chance to look at the minutes from the previous meeting?
Yeah.
And if so, do we have any corrections or additions? If not, we'll make the motion to accept them.
I'll make that motion.
Jeff, I second. Larry, all those in favor?
Alright.
Do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
From what I nailed you, the one I put on the A R P A.
Yep, I see that.
I highlighted it, but you know it wasn't on my list.
Okay, anything else from you guys? If not, we'll take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Drew, what were you adding? You were adding something.
I got it on here, but that's just to talk about, it's not. Just an update built by a cover. We'll take a motion to approve agenda. Larry's second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright, old red command, more engineering. I think you guys will go to another meeting. How come every time we see you, you need money?
This is a lot of stuff for a while, so they just, little update, they just did the patching work. We had six patches, I think, around town, about sixty percent of our planned quantity. So we have patchings still left in the budget. So the contractor wants to take for that, but yeah, just a little update. Three works done, patching's done. All they have left is their dormant seed. All the topsoil that was placed around sidewalks and behind curb. So I think they're doing that this week sometime. I gotta call Luke to confirm that. But that's the only work left this week, current this year. Then this will be the last payout and engineering invoice for this year, probably. And then one little update, special assessments. Lowen County does it a certain way that the city has to do special assessments and do it every year. So we're gonna go through Sherri, well Sherri on Thursday, me and Tom. So any special assessment, questions she shouldn't be able to answer from the city if anybody has any questions. Should go to Sherri about it, they want paid off early, her yearly payments and that sort of thing. Is there any questions about the project and the street?
No corrections, you get all that done?
Yep, yep, so they, there was four actually, but they did three and they were questioning about the one I haven't got around to. The one by Lauren's house. They said it wasn't moved, but I think it is moved. I had it held up there, but it's on our punch list, so if it is moved, we'll take a look at it. I looked at your spot, two layers over there, and I think we can spread some. Not this year, but next year before the chip seal, we'll spread some fines, so it kind of levels off so the water can get to the curb, I think. It's just that one spot on the north, or the west side there. Yep, I should have had them done, like spread some fines in this year, but I think if they spread fines next year and then put the chip seal on top of that, it'll work better than if they did this year, snow, no fall might hit the fines and help me with the puddle anyway. So we'll correct it next year, it's on my list to do, along with the manhole. I might have a scrape off on most manhole lids too, that's also on my punch list, but.
Like, we cleaned them up pretty good.
Yeah, Jeff, okay.
And always over here, you did that patchwork on Bird's shoe.
Yep, yep.
When he went on the south side, it looks like they went right through a pothole. And they just stopped right in the middle of the pothole.
Oh, really?
Wouldn't it make sense to go a little bit further south and take care of the pothole?
So there is a valley gutter there, or are you saying one right out here or the one in intersection over there? So there is a valley gutter there, it's overlaid with asphalt, so it runs east and west on that south part of the intersection. So they just rode the valley gutter. You could have removed and replaced the valley gutter. We just had a patching quantity, so we'll see how it performs during the winter and the spring rain happens. But if there is action existing in that area, you can kind of see on the north path. It's covered with asphalt themselves. That's why we left. Yeah, well, I wish we could have, if we would have done that street completely, we would have replaced that valley gutter, but in this case, we just did patching.
Anything else from you guys here?
Yeah, just contractors' application payment. Six thousand five, five hundred ninety-four dollars.
Okay, we'll need a motion for the fourth payment, the contractor for patching.
What's that, the fourth or the sixth?
Sixth.
Well, six, I'm sure they want to, the fourth application for, sorry. Payment number six for sixty thousand five ninety-four.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
So Lauren, second? All those in favor?
Alright.
And then, yeah, we had a inspector out there doing patchwork and then special assessments, kind of finalizing that.
Okay, then for the engineering invoice. Two eight four three seven for ten thousand six seventy-four ninety, we need a motion for that one also. So moved. Second?
I'll second.
Jeff, all those in favor?
Alright.
Yeah, if any other questions come up in the next couple months, I'd, we'll actually give you probably a rundown of the streets you guys are thinking about adding. Give you some cost estimates here. Tom and I will be walking through your one of these council meetings probably during the week.
There's just one thing, did we get, did we get charged for that? Adjustment on the manhole cover?
Why, is there a charge or did we charge them?
Well, I see here it says.
Yep.
Adjust manhole cast a fifteen thousand dollars.
Yep, so that's within the patching, they had their, they adjusted some of the manholes and they put top pads on, which is an internal rating around the manhole. So we paid them to adjust any gate fills and manholes that were within the patching limits, so there's one out here.
It's not counting the ones that were.
No, no, that's, sorry, that's a great question. No, we did not. These are on the patching that were, that was done, not the patchwork from.
That's, that's the only question.
Yep, so the two manholes were one down here and one down there, and then there was a gate fill here on Bird's and then one on Front Street, so. No, not on the review ones, so, very question.
Thanks, sweetie.
Yeah.
Any others?
No, that is it. Just let me and Tom know if you guys have any questions, we'll be around next couple council meetings. We'll go through the cost message and the money situation.
Okay.
Sounds good, thanks guys.
Okay, thank you. Alright, did you have any? You just here, okay. Alright, we'll go into city maintenance, then Bill, Tommy, you have anything first?
Um, the curb structure is fixed. Lauren put that out on there, seems to be working good.
Okay.
So far, so good.
That's good, it was, it sounded good last meeting.
They did get a dumpster out at the dump up there, we did take one load of appliances out. They brought another one for, because that'll be two.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's that costing us?
Well, he'll, depending on what he gets out of it. He said it shouldn't cost us anything.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Anything else?
I just noticed you guys dug up that sinkhole down here by Dwight's house, and I saw there is a culvert running that way. Wouldn't that find there?
There's a culvert that runs south. And Dean Esmerger stopped me and he said, there are old railroad tracks used to go through. He said there was a storm sewer right there, and then that's where that culvert is coming from.
Okay.
The one that's coming south, but there is that one where we dug it up, the storm sewer that's on the north side, is connected to that one.
Okay, so there must be a leak somewhere in there, that's what's.
Well, what they did was kind of dumb, they put, they tried putting a key in there, but all they did was just cut out the. Culvert.
They didn't do a real job cutting it, doesn't fit in there.
A lot of plastic over the top of it.
There's big gaps and they're that wide.
So then that's what was falling into the culvert, so I don't know if we want to eliminate the one coming up the hill. And then, so I'm all attached that storm sewer just to that one going to the west.
They didn't have flex seal back then. We do. I guess whatever you guys think, I don't know.
I think what we should do is just start at that storm sewer and just dig at an angle. Not put the nineties in there, but dig at an angle to the southwest until we hit that other culvert. We'd probably go in twenty, thirty feet. You know, put a gradual, then hit that other culvert, seal it so that. Because if we ever have to jet it or, I don't know how long you're gonna get around those nineties.
Right, yeah.
Where we have a gradual.
Put a sweep in it?
We can buy those, I know Menard sells them those. They're culverts is what they are, but they got that reinforcement it built in too.
Is that on your property or is that Twilight's stuff?
I'm not even sure which that's on, because it's a trade. I think it's actually on ours, because I think we own everything from the edge of that driveway. Yeah, the approach to the south.
Well, thanks for the permission.
What else you can do as far as.
Yeah, it's kind of your call on this one, seriously.
I mean, as long as the drainage, if we eliminate that one coming to the, to the, you say to the north?
To the south.
To the south. And is that gonna leave any, is that even hooked up, because there's the storm drain further south on the curb, isn't that? I thought there was. If there was no storm drain.
Just on the opposite side of the street, right?
Yeah, to the north where we're digging, and then to the east of the one that's.
Okay. Yeah, because it won't bother the drainage, is that not gonna inhibit any drainage that's on our property? Definitely not would, 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 you know, concern me is that it's wet down there enough the way it is, but. It's not gonna make any difference. Not like I'm not gonna make you put a storm drain in.
You know, I saw before with that railroad track in there. That's why they had, had come from each side and maybe took it to the west. Now with the railroad track gone, that's all gone.
Yeah.
On the south end.
Oh, it's up to you, whatever you guys think's the best.
Well, I don't know. See, I think we should get rid of that ninety that's in there.
Well, I think so too, yeah.
That's all, that's all it is.
Okay, any else, guys? Okay. We'll move on to the audit and then.
I just have the, you have the new insurance policy there, if anybody wants to look over it, I already paid it. Where the old stuff that you all checked there, whether you wanted done on it. It's all in there, she's had everything taken care of. So if anyone asks, Lauren likes to take that home and read it.
Do we need to approve that or anything?
You, you, we always did with Dave Ravinius, I don't know if you're supposed to. That's a bill that we pay. He, those last, last year, he had me do it twice to get you all to approve it, but I don't know if you're really supposed to.
Well, we, Lauren and I looked through it, I don't know, multiple times recently, so I know we went, found a few mistakes, but they fixed that.
And that's, well, the one with everything fixed?
Other than for a month or a year.
We paid him twice a year, and what is, what was that amount on there? You're right there inside the book on, they were paid. Does it say right there, pay?
Twenty-six ninety-one.
That's with your additions to lift stations and.
Yeah, I would assume.
That's everything she said.
I don't.
See, if that one wasn't, when I came on board, that's what, we had to.
Make a motion to approve it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that. Second.
All those in favor? Anything else from here, just bring up that.
The other one is our grant monies.
Okay, that A R P A grant did come through, so we got a little over twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand four hundred thirty-one sixty-five, and then one year later, they give us the second half, that's just the first.
Was that last meeting we had talked about?
Yeah, I had talked to the code of pump and control, and they do sell. On the systems where we can sense it up here and shoot a signal down to the, or to the pump house down there. And they can, we can actually control the pressure up here versus down there.
What's, do you know, did he give you a price?
No, he's gonna send out a quote for next minute.
As long as it's something new, I think it can be covered.
Yeah, because we got, how many years do we have to spend this?
Five years, if we don't spend it in five years.
We'll spend it in five minutes, twenty-one grand.
Yeah, but we only get, we get the twenty-one this year, then you get the another twenty-one next year. We give you half of it one year and the next year you get half.
We had talked about getting new meters also, and those are shit, the way it sounded at these.
Well, those, I think we were, what we were talking is get some new ones and put the newer ones in people's, that you get. And regular people in town that are here, here around, and then take those good ones and put them onto the hunter houses, right?
Yeah.
Since we don't use them as much. But, you know, so we're putting new ones in the ones, because we've got a lot of them that are going down.
Are you guys okay with all that? I mean, that's, we're in dire.
That makes total sense.
Those things.
So these new ones, are they like the proximity, so I mean, you have to get close and it reads it automatically, or how does that?
No, you still have to use the gun, you walk up to it and just touch it with the gun.
We can't afford the.
We can't do the drive-by ones, they're, they're ridiculous.
That was crazy amount, like five years ago.
Well, when we looked at it last time to get a grant, we had to pay out ninety thousand out of our own pocket. Or sixty thousand out of our own pocket to get a grant from them. So when we were just talking, if we just order a bunch of them and start putting them on the.
It's an deposit, yeah, yeah.
So you guys are okay with all that?
No, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just, I guess keep us.
If you order anything, please, please give me a bill, I have to every year account for this money to, up to Bez Martin. And if you don't, they'll take their money back.
I understand.
Yeah, we use it or lose it, and then she's got a, we're just doing a different bank account for that again, so it's like our eighth bank account, but. That way we keep it separate, if we, we can show it every year, and then four years from now, we're not wondering what's going on.
Well, it'll save you from having to keep, go back to general, and then if they, if they audit you for it, I gotta go back into general and pull up all this stuff where if I just have that one photo with that one account. They're not looking through our whole, all of our city stuff.
Alright, so you guys, work to do.
So you're approving a new account for that?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think we need a motion for that. You got anything else for us then?
No.
Alright, we move on to water sewer policing.
Nothing new?
Losing a deputy, I guess.
Yep. When do you?
Today's first day in Boulder.
I suppose this is a shitty time here to be looking to this one.
It's on the season.
With that being said, who owns that house season?
The school.
So I turn the Senate bill to the school, huh?
Yeah, that's who we paid rent to.
Okay.
Um, I got a couple of guys I'm gonna be interviewing though.
Okay.
So.
Nice.
So hopefully, we can get a little higher here pretty quick.
Okay, and hopefully that works out for you.
Yeah.
You might have to work a little bit. Punky trick every, every day.
He's out in the country rolling.
Couldn't even get out of bed till five thirty. He's just started drinking coffee, he's even running up.
I haven't seen him in so long, I thought you moved to Boulder.
Okay, Jeff, you got anything for us?
Seen a few lights out, just early morning, I just went for a look. Um, did you guys see any in particular? I seen one over across the street from, I think it's on Dwayne Nelson's. Kind of shines in a parking lot of the bank. It's on the south side of the water. Yeah, 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 that needs to be replaced, at least it was out when I looked, I mean, these lights can.
Yeah.
Go all night.
They come off and on at all weird times.
It's on Elm Street?
Right, and then there's, and then there's also one. Um, on the corner, I believe on the corner, this gentleman's property, that's, and that could be, it wasn't at that time working, so. I need to check again, because like I said, I could check one day, the next day be on a photo ice or something, might not work, so. Um, I'll make a round in the morning, and if not, I'll give them a buzz. Other than that, they have roads or, the roads.
You know, I drove around for like three hours last night trick or treating, and I didn't notice. Too many dodged kids outside, it's like eighty kids in town.
It was busy.
About eighty people, yeah.
I know, that's what raises.
That's good to see, guys.
Like sixty-five of them were ninjas.
Need to really pay attention over here.
You're just seeing the same one.
No candy left, so we're ninjas.
Okay, thanks for doing that, too. Larry, you got anything?
Nope.
Lauren?
Nope.
Alright. Old business, city permits for Dwayne Nelson remodel inside house, we got to do that. Okay, holster remodel, basement, golf course raffle board, Doug's limited raffle board, both at Danny's place. Storm wax house, water, did we find anything out with them?
I talked to Ryan, and we agreed that he's gonna pay twenty-five dollars a month. We'll just build that along with his water bill, and then when he sells crop, he's got a crop land, then he'll pay it.
Perfect, well, I'm glad you did that, thanks. And he's okay with that?
Yep.
Happy with it, perfect.
Basically, I wanted to admit it. You know, he's gotta keep twenty-five dollar payment rate going.
I'll keep an eye on it, hopefully it works out, so, thanks, Lauren, alright.
And if it isn't cleared, I, I did mention till, if it's cleared by October of next year, she's going on the taxes.
Okay, yeah.
We'll turn it over as a special.
Okay. Perfect. Alright, new business, uh, city permits for Rusty Freeman, he's getting new windows and flooring. Linda Zinke remodel, I don't know, Cattle Cottage, is that how you say it? J D K Construction for remodel on.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the house over here, I forgot.
On sidewalk, how do you remodel sidewalk?
No, no, over here, I got to go back and look in there and see, see where that place was.
That's the one that's got all the siding ripped off.
Yeah, next to Sherri Ellison, who one year, they're remodeling the whole inside and everything, and his hired man will be living there. But then he said also, he might buy a, a Randy Miller's other house over here and turn around sell this, because one of the school teacher's mother would like to move here. If you get that done, Tom.
I was gonna ask about, I scrolled by and saw that, and I didn't know if that, I was in that last meeting, but I was just wondering if anybody. Got a permit there.
They got all those little walls ripped open, they didn't find that missing brother in there, did they?
No, they, they went through everything, they found a lot of other stuff.
Okay, alright, so.
The next one, Kevin's.
We need a motion to approve all the, those three.
Oh.
Move to approve the bill, Lauren, that's second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Okay. Alright, sidewalk cleaning for Main Street for snow removal.
Kevin is now, he, he, he won't be able to return, well, he has, he's gonna have to, he's got to get on county roads.
Get up earlier.
Just have him wing his blade out there a little bit.
He said, he said if you can't find somebody, then he'll try to help out, but.
Do Remble still do some of the streets or some, they don't do anything?
They do the senior center.
They're tapering off, yeah, they don't do what they used to do.
I am, I would say, Dwayne Nelson just got a little unit that he probably would, could do. That little tractor one he does. Kevin said.
Not at all.
That one here, you don't use with Bobcat, you gotta have.
Well, I think he would bring.
Dwayne leaves a lot in wintertime for Florida too, though.
Yeah.
He goes down to Florida in the winter.
Oh, does he?
I think he asked Troy.
I meant Troy, I meant Troy, I'm sorry, Troy.
Yeah, because I don't know if Remblets would wanna get up that early and have it done all the time.
Troy's always out there anyway, he does around the bank, he does all around the bank.
Yeah, we better start.
I meant to say Troy, I'm sorry, yeah, he does all around the bank with his little tractor. But Kevin just said he would do it, but what happens if he has to be out early there, he can't put this over top of the county. Because the first one he's gotta get out is this one.
Well, why don't you do it?
Excuse me?
You know how to run that thing, come on.
Then I'd have to be paying the bill for all the wrecked buildings.
You'll get better.
Okay, yeah, we better start asking.
I guess, I guess.
Who's gonna, so we all.
Who's gonna have to learn, I mean, uh.
Troy.
Troy.
Looks like you built, sorry.
Yeah, we do love.
Yeah, and if not, let us know so we can find someone else.
I can go who else does it with a blade, and it's small enough to get on there anyway. Maybe it's small enough to do that.
His, see Kevin's unit, it's perfect down there, but so does Troy's.
Right. I'm sure Troy will do it.
He's out there, anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay, um, last thing we gotta go through still, um, we postponed last meeting for those guys, it's for their pay increase that we haven't done forever. Um, because we were missing you guys, so we didn't wanna make that decision, but what I did was I met with those guys. And came up with some numbers that they're happy with, and I think it's fair, and all, if you guys wanna change it or not approve it, that's up to you, but. Um, what we came up with was, Tom hasn't had a raise in, what'd you say, four years, so we came up with twenty-one dollars an hour for him. And I don't know if anyone else is, I don't even know who paid the other guy, so I didn't even think of that, but, but yeah, they wouldn't be getting that, but Tom, is everyone okay with twenty-one?
Well, now he's sitting here, can't he?
You showed up.
I had a whole spiel.
You were one of the players involved.
Lauren, are you okay with that?
Fine.
Larry?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so we'll take a motion to approve that then?
I'll make a motion.
Just in case. Uh, second, all those in favor?
Alright, fine.
Okay, and Bill, um, by the way, this is starting October first, I told him, because that's what we agreed upon a few months ago. And then we'll just pay him for whatever hours he had in October, and then we'll put his on through his salary for this month. And Bill, we were looking at a hundred and fifty dollar a month increase on his salary, and a hundred and fifty dollars a month towards a retirement plan. Um, and that's for two years, so if I do math with inflation, you're still losing money, I think, but. Are you guys okay with that? That's pretty much two years.
Pretty smooth, that pays.
Okay, Lauren, second?
I'll second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Alright.
And that's something that I think we should make, I'm sure we get it on the agenda either September or, well, August or September. Annual salary negotiations, that way we can include it in the October budgeting.
Right, so we're gonna have to do this really soon.
Yeah.
So you want it in August or September, you said?
I would say in August, because that gives us a September meeting to go over the financials hopefully this year, the budget. Yeah, and that gives us the monthly playlist, I guess I'd be more comfortable with that.
I'll just put it up on my board up here.
And then, like I said, the other hourly people, are we just gonna keep them the same, or I would like to get, because we get help once in a while, like George, you guys are staying once in a while.
George hasn't done it.
Oh, he doesn't, so we don't need to worry about anything else.
Can't take garbage, all the grass on here. He worked on the garbage truck a few times with us.
Okay.
What's his, not really, right?
And what, what would you guess a month there's?
He doesn't do it monthly, it's just once a while.
Yeah, it's just once in a while, if one of us need to take off horse sick or something.
Right. Yeah, it won't be in the bills, obviously.
No, give me one second, I'll tell you, you can keep talking about something.
Well, you can go ahead and, you guys look at the bills.
I did, I didn't have any questions.
Anyone got any concerns or mental questions?
Well, one thing I will say, I'll help you out here, you'll see once you, if you were to take off that top number that's so high. And take the twenty-one thousand off of there, because that's what we got from the state treasurer's office.
Yep.
It's still gonna look like your bottom ones are higher than the top, but if you, if last month. You'll see there's a lot of two-monthers, people didn't turn in their checks, so we're paying doubles on a lot on this round, where last month it was really low on what we paid. Because people didn't turn.
I noticed that, yeah.
It was like seventeen thousand last month that we paid out, so we've got a lot more than, we've got almost double stuff on this one.
Okay.
You, they're usually, the top's usually higher.
That's good. Okay, so you guys got any questions on that?
And that's when, they need to cash a check before they go on here, is that what you're saying?
Yes, they have to go, I, I don't, this all is, when it's gone through the bank. Yes, they have to go, I, I don't, this all is one that's gone through the bank. So if, if somebody holds on to their stuff, then I have to, I have to wait until it goes to the bank to call it money. Senders do.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Like right now, you'll see on their local county didn't send theirs and cash theirs, they usually do right less.
If he's helping these guys out, we sure don't want to lose them. I just see hundreds, two hundred and fifty the last month, so it's not.
No, we need to adjust that a little.
Well, don't worry about it.
He doesn't really do much during the, during the winter, so he's, sure, it's not gonna pay a whole lot of money.
So we'll approve these bills and, or take a motion to approve.
I'll approve the bill.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor?
All right.
Okay, and then we'll take a motion for, what do you think, a dollar raise, you guys? For Tim, for any other help? Okay. Can you put that on our motion before the two?
Just all part-time help, you just want to do that, just cover all for you?
Jim McDormand's at fifteen dollars now.
Like in sixteen or whatever?
Yeah, all part-time help then.
Move a buck.
Okay.
All part-time now.
All right, uh, date and time, I don't know what it says.
What do you approve the bills, who just?
I, I moved in, Jeff, second.
Thank you.
We're not missing any of you guys, so, anything else for us?
You guys have anything to do with this recovery or stuff?
We got the sinkhole, we got that, so. Date and time of next meeting is Monday, December sixth at seven P M. Everyone gonna work?
Yep.
Take a motion to adjourn then. So moved. Lauren, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.